Hello.
Hello.
All right, Pat Giannetti finally arrived so we can get the meeting started. We were waiting for Pat. It's nice of you to be on time, Pat. Thank you very much.
Can I sit by you?
All right. We'd like to open. Meeting number? Uh-oh.
My agenda doesn't say.
Thirty-four.
Mary's good.
How come mine's the only agenda that doesn't have one? Meeting number thirty-four. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I spilled water on everything, so I apologize for the tardiness and the wet agendas. So, welcome. It's always great to be here at the Ohio State Extension. Eric Burke, his staff, and everybody that treats us so well. But the only sad thing about this is when we come here, we know summer's almost over. You know, so it goes in a flash, blink of an eye, in a flash. Carol's walking again, you know.
Yeah.
I said lightweight, Mary. I said, okay, go on home and put everything on it. Went upstairs, went down, and try it. You gotta try yourself.
You know, Carol, she always follows a doctor's order.
I checked it out. It looks good to me, so.
Trust me, if you saw it about three months ago, it would've looked good to anybody. Man on man on match.
But I'll be good.
She is.
But the pizza's okay.
The pizza, when the fish was just perfect. My phone didn't get hurt.
You know, if you didn't hear the story, you know, she's coming down the back steps of the Avalon carrying pizzas and food. And, and everything else, you know. And she got her heel caught, went down the steps, and she landed backwards on her heel, on her ankle, and never, never dropped the pizza or the, or the food she was eating. But she's sitting on her, on her ankle, and when she got, you know, off of it, it was at a ninety degree. It was snap ninety degrees. So she proceeded to call the Avalon on her phone, because no one was there, and she said, "Bring a towel, a bag of ice, and call an ambulance." And they came outside. She wrapped the towel around her foot and pulled her ankle straight. So, there's not many people, you know, that I know that could've done that, you know. So, we want to talk about tough. She's as tough as they think, so.
Don't anybody ever do that. I think I find myself why I do that. But, at that time, you just think, oh my goodness.
Well, we want to start out. Eric, do you want to start out? And maybe we'll break from the top and let you, you know, introduce some people and, you know.
Okay. For those of you that aren't as familiar with Ohio State Extension, I'll start with some of our staff. Bette Spero, our longtime MCS educator. She does nutrition programs, a lot of serve safe, because if you don't know, the state law is changing in regards to what certifications restaurant owners have to have. So, Bette's saving the day and making sure they're all trained, and they have to take a test for serve safe. And it's, I, I had to take the test myself to get certified, so I, yeah, it's, it's not easy. So she does a great job doing all those and lots of other programs. Our new 4H educator saving the day.
Aww.
That's, that's from the township down in the southwest that nobody thinks is still part of Mahoney County, right?
Little Smiths.
No, Smiths?
So, she's been great, really doing a lot with the 4H program, one-on-one visits with clubs and really rejuvenating what's happened. Make sure, make sure I see everybody around here. Robin in your vet back here, run our FNP program. So we have two nutrition programs, and those are both federal money we're able to bring in because the commissioners support us. And it's a lot of money, so it's really helpful to the county and all those folks that do different programs, all the folks that need help learning how to eat better, shop better, and make sure they're eating clean food as well. Joe and Sissy and Ruth is back there.
Renee's here.
Renee's here. Our other person. And they do our SNAP ed program. It's somewhat similar. It's a multi-week program that folks go through to learn those eating, those healthier eating kind of skills. Let's see, Lori, our office associate and our building manager. She helps to keep things running smoothly around here. Who did I miss?
Kathy.
Kathy's in the back. Kathy's our information assistant, and she helps out front. And we have a few interns this summer the university gave us.
Wow, that's incredible.
Which was very much appreciated, and we have two fall interns coming onboard very soon. So, lots happening, lots happening in water quality with fertilizer, working with farmers on, on those issues. And farmers all just hope for a little bit of rain not to ruin the fair, but a big little bubble around the fair so it doesn't rain there, but the rest of us need rain, rain on the field, so. That's our only thing right now that's in trouble. Thank you very much. We're happy to host you today and...
Thank you. All right. Well, let's, while we're in the introduction mode, it's obviously Anthony, Carol, Dave, and, you know, we always have to make the production of Dancing the Boy because she's, she doesn't like anybody to say her name out loud or to mention her, but she's our person of worth. Does a great job. Let's start to go around and let everybody from the county, Ralph, you want to start us off?
County auditor Ralph Meacham.
Anna Diassena, Special Projects.
Audrey Tillis, Executive Director.
Pat?
Pat Goshawnessy.
The guy that was late. Patched any county engineers.
Pat, actually, you know, I, I was waiting to get a towel to wipe up all the water I spilled, so you were a good, you were a good out for me, so. You were a good out.
Bob Durbin, Deputy Engineer, and actually the reason why Pat's late, I was on the phone.
All right, where are we at?
You know, anybody?
Yeah.
Karen, Phil, who?
Phil Berger, Mahoney County, Yountville, Land Control Program.
Yeah, Mahoney County, Yountville, Land Control Program.
Karen Ughaley, Human Resources Director.
Linda McCollough, Convention and Visitors Bureau Director.
Jim Porchnell, Director of Purchasing.
Dennis O'Hara, Director of Emergency Management.
Lou Vega with the Great Team.
Just Gandy or JJC?
There you go.
Bruce does shedding. She had, she had that very.
Oh, okay.
Ally's back there.
How about the trustees and the city council? Why don't we give them answers there, too? The mayor?
The mayor.
Bernie Kostar, Mayor of Kanfield.
Joe Lo Cicero, Member of Council.
Marieza Parkright, Campville Township Trustee, and Joe Kloski, our other Campville Township trustee is here somewhere.
I'm there.
And I'm Bob Tomlin from Ellsworth, Township Commissioner.
Welcome.
Neighbor.
All right, well, welcome. Thank you very much for being here. Is there anybody who wants a public comment? We're gonna skip it, or why? We'll just see if there's anybody has a name in a second. I'm sorry?
I'm complaining with that?
Well, sure.
I live, I live in Mahoney Township.
I'm sorry, you gotta give your name and address for that.
My name's Louis Infante. I live at 15583 Mahoney Avenue in Lake Mowen. And I addressed this problem to the county engineers before, twenty years ago. And I reopened the issue in 2016 with these big sinkholes alongside Route 18. Five, six foot in diameter, five, six foot deep. So I went to the procedure, went to county engineers, filled out the complaint form, didn't hear from anybody three or four weeks, so I called to get an appointment with the county engineer, which I didn't get. They sent Tim Burkett and his superintendent, Ed, something, I can't remember. They come out and looked at the sinkholes, big enough for a car to drive into. They said they're gonna put barricades around it, but they didn't. They never came back. Three or four weeks went by, called them again, tried to get another meeting with the county engineer, they sent them back out. They end up digging a hole next to their catch basin, all the way down to the pipe. Found the pipe, busted a hole in it, threw a piece of tin over it, covered it back up, sent the sewer back away. Being an employee at the Milton Township Road Supervisor for twenty-seven years, I told them, "There's a hole, there's pipes blocked up, the back pressure's blowing these holes up, all the way down eighteen to five thirty-four. There's been a water problem there for thirty, forty years." Just last week, and there's a police report on it, dump truck pulled off side of road, almost rolled over because it went down in one of those sinkholes. Now there's five, six sinkholes that I know, three of them happen to be in my front yard. I've been filling them with rocks and keep filling them. First one they did twenty years ago, they dug it down, couldn't find a pipe, filled it up with, with big limestone.
We want you to stick around. I don't think we're gonna solve that problem here. We'll stick around after the meeting.
I'm following with the seizure.
No, stick around after the meeting, and, you know, I'm sure that it's a, it's a lot larger problem and a lot larger expense than, than any of us realize, so we'll stick around and we'll, we'll see what we can do. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Ford Hoggie, I'm from Marine Healthcare, and I just wanted to mention, I've been working with Robin for almost four years now, and she works with our residential sites, our men and women who are in substance mental health, so they're a residential program. And positive impact that the program has had on our residents specifically has been outstanding. They just have such a knowledge now of learning physical activity and proper nutrition and how to treat, how to properly teach their children to nutrition and everything. So, we, we love the program, we're excited for the new curriculum. Robin is amazing with our clients, and the clients really look forward to when Robin comes in each week, so I just wanna tell them that this program is. Robin's also gonna be working with our medically assisted treatment clients as well, who is new for us. She also works with our housing clients, too. So, awesome program, we love it, and we can't wait to continue and see what's in the future.
All right, thank you. Yes.
My name's Josh Avery, I represent the Hunting Valley Rescue Mission, and I guess after hearing that, I'm, I'm here representing the similar type of thing. We have had Robin and also Joe come out and do the SNAP education over at the Rescue Mission. Especially with our, the guys that I work with are our nine-month discipleship academy guys, they're there for nine months. A lot of them have had addiction issues, and it's not quite a rehab, but a lot of those guys are working on their lives. And so, you know, we're, the spiritual, physical, all sorts of different ways we're addressing, changing their life, but, you know, before we had Ohio State get involved, we didn't have some of those, you know, the healthy eating aspect was something that we just didn't have. So, them coming in, I know is making a difference because of the conversations that the guys are having afterwards, you know, saying things like, "Oh, so ramen's not nutritional?" No, no, ramen noodles, that's not good. So that's like what their main meals were before. So, you know, having those kinds of conversations. And again, just that ongoing involvement is really making a difference, so thanks for supporting that as well.
Thanks, Josh. Yeah.
On behalf of the master gardeners and all the state programs that have taken out a hit from the governor's budget here in the last year, I want to thank the commissioners for the support that they, they give the extension office, because without your support, these federal programs that you anchor, we wouldn't be able to get. And if you notice, the landscape around the building out here has increased tremendously. It now has color. People come down forty-six and say, "Oh my God, look at that nursery it's in there." So, part of that is, we hold up the BP gas station on Saturday night, and the rest of the time, I'm an intern, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you give your name and address for the rescue? Oh, that's great. Doesn't get better than that. We need some help at some other departments, too. Maybe buy the shell station on the other department.
I know Judge Delick had to leave, but one of the things she's excited about that she wanted to share today and didn't have time because of her nine-thirty hearing, is we run the cartoons program. So, all the juvenile offenders that have a moving violation in their car come here, and Robin is, her role is a 4H volunteer and about eight kids now, run that program. So Robin trains the kids, and then our, our 4H youth teach the other kids. So it's a peer-on-peer program. They come here and they spend two hours, they have to give up their cellphone for those two hours, and they do a lot of hands-on activities about distracted driving, how to go through an obstacle course with the fagot vision goggles on, lots of things like that. And the, the program, the juvenile court really appreciates that, and Judge Delick just is excited to rate it off of that. We go out thirty kids a month, and they go away with changed attitude about what driving means and how, how they should be safe.
Well, Robin, I would've been in your program before I was eighteen years old, and it would've had nothing to do with cellphones.
Surprisingly, we're seeing a, a big trend, and so parents, grandparents, talk to your kids about just safe speeds. It's alarming at the, the rate of speed that these kids are driving over. You know, you would think it's, you know, five, seven, ten, it's, we're talking twenty, fifteen, twenty, and upwards.
Yes.
You know, and I, I stand there and I, and I say to them, you know, as a mom, you know, and what'd you tell your mom? You know, "What is your rush?" "Well, I gotta get home, right?" So, just really talk to your kids and your grandkids about, you know, giving themselves a little extra time, you know, just taking that extra effort, so, you know, to make safe choices.
And the phone.
Yes.
And just texting while you're driving.
And we do, yeah, we talk a lot about distracted driving, and you'd be surprised it's not just the phone, it's food. And some of the foods that they're talking about are eating pancakes, eating soup, eating oatmeal, mac and cheese was a huge one. So, so we, yeah, makeup, make, make up on themselves. But we really have a great partnership with the Ohio State Housing Patrol, and they come over each month and they talk to the kids, you know, about, you know, what they're, what they're doing and, and, you know, some of the safety driving laws, so.
You know what? The first time I totaled my car was right here in Campville, I was about seventeen, it was nineteen seventy, and right on Cardinal Drive, leaving a Campville basketball pitch, Campville pitch basketball game. I totaled my sixty-six Pontiac Tempest, my first car.
Hard to do at twenty miles an hour, isn't it?
It would've been hard to do if I was going twenty.
So, yeah, we really just, talk to your family, talk to your kids, you know, and again, thank you so much for being here, and we, we truly appreciate our partnership with Judge Delick. She is, she's a great, great gal, and she even come out and, and watched one of our classes.
That's a fantastic job for the community.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds. I'm Marilyn McKinley, I'm President of Mahoney County Master Gardeners, and it was mentioned about the landscaping, I just want to say this is all volunteer. Please do not miss our display, Building Forty-Four. Please be sure to come by, we have a garden, a garden, and it's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna get on to the meeting and try to get us done. Approval of previous minutes of board meeting number thirty-three for Tuesday, August twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, and approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Medio Agetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, journal entry number one.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Medio Agetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Travels. Board of Mahoney County Commissioners, Auditor, Sanitary, everybody's calling. Attend debit issuance and ratings meeting in New York City, New York, and Chicago for the year two thousand seventeen, estimated a thousand dollars, general and non-general. Guess that's just to, to clear up some things. All right, motion approved travels.
Motion approved travels to eight.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Medio Agetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Agreements.
Good morning. We have several document management programs going on. This particular is one I believe is the Pro Bay Court, we're in the midst of it. This is scanning and electronic filing rather than paper.
Good. Thanks, Rob. Jobs and family. All right. Agreement with Mahoney County Sheriff's Office for fingerprinting services in amount of three thousand dollars, non-general for JFS. Phil, lead-based.
We have two agreements with American, one with WW construction for lead ass control and health insurance work, and two with American Medical for lead ass control and health insurance.
All righty. Who's site now?
This is an agreement, he, they clear municipalities for off-site lease agreements, this is February twenty-seventh.
All right, action. Motion approved agreements.
Motion approved agreements, letters A through F.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Medio Agetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Medio Agetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Okay, resolutions, Commissioner's purchasing.
Number one, this is a bank issue for repair of an item.
Okay, B, Commissioner's resolution to extend the time with the annexation petition request of eighteen point eight-three acres in Campville Township until September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. I want to thank the Campville Township, Campville City, Campville Village, mayor, trustees, city council. They're doing a great job working together on behalf of all of Campville. They've had several meetings, and you're truly represented very well in this community in Campville by both village and city council and trustees. And they're working hard to make it better for everyone. They're working on JEDs, they're working on a TIF, they're working on an agreement that'll try to utilize some of the business tax dollars on new developments that come in, to do things differently. And, you know, right now with the state of Ohio continuing to take tax dollars away, whether it be in the local government funds or other opportunities that we have to help our communities and the local residents, it's getting extremely difficult, and these are some new and innovative ways that they're working on to try and help the residents of Campville, and we thank them for their hard work and what they've been doing, so. That's B. C, Commissioner's OMB. Anna, you want to do that? Hey, Hoggie.
That is mine. Commissioners, this is a resolution approving the issuance itself of funds. We already had this resolution, we're just replacing it. When they were pricing, we were able to get more savings. Actually, out of our refunding this year, we were able to, through working with a little more, we did a bond council, auditor's office, commissioners, additional savings on those refundings, about seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And so, this resolution is maximizing those savings.
Excellent.
I am B.
I'm D. Commissioner, this is a resolution in regards to the targeted community alternatives prison TCAP grant fund. It was awarded, and so this is authorizing it and report with the fund for that, and commissioners are moving on that. That TCAP program is the commissioners, sheriff's office, it's common picks court, prosecutor's office is working on it, and it's gonna be a great success.
Beautiful. Thank you, Hoggie. Hazmat. You want to do that?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Item E is hazmat, and they were on a call, an emergency call, and that's reimbursement request through the insurance company the commissioners have to authorize submitting that bill. Also, on F, it is another cost recovery for a call that the hazmat team was alerted to, is now. Item G, OMB grants. Also, on behalf of the hazmat team, Children's Services Board declares surplus vehicle. The hazmat team intends to operate this van, I believe the last I heard, they're gonna place it at Sebring with some materials and supplies for hazardous spills, so they'll have stock of assistance out in Sebring. The next item, EFGH, is an authorization to transfer another vehicle from the Children's Services Board to the Board of Elections. It was declared a surplus vehicle by CSV, and the Board of Elections will be able to utilize that for their services. Item I is a collaboration between the Mahoney County Commissioners and the Juvenile Justice Court. It's reclaim funding that provides assistance to use Mahoney County through the court.
Thank you, Jen.
Jen, do you want to say anything about that?
I think you're good. It's just 4E funding, actually, or...
Oh.
Part of this.
Lost your hair. I've been calling it reclaim all week, sorry. And the last item is a memorandum of understanding with Catholic Charities Regional Agency, and what we're doing there is, Mahoney County Commissioners are part of the continuum of care, which is the, the goal is to end homelessness in Mahoney County. It's a HUD program that gets distributed about three point five million dollars to local nonprofits to assist homeless people. And this year, part of the required mandated software that those agencies use to track those individuals and assist them was not funded. So, instead of scrambling to collect the fees for this year's software licenses, the commissioners agreed to provide funding to Catholic Charities and those agencies for licenses to operate that program. In your, in your program, you also went hand count. Oh, yeah. You may have heard about the point-time count. They had a group that went under the bridge and... Yeah. It's called the point-time count, we're required to complete that for HUD every year, and it's amazing how many people in the community need help. And they are trying to, to reach everybody any way they can. They have families, they're only singles. They were families under, yeah, that's it. They're all country, yeah. Also, since the commissioner brought that up, just real quick, they have moved to a coordinated entry, so if anyone you know is in trouble, you could have them call 211, and they'll be provided or switched over to the housing coordinator there, and then directly assisted into housing opportunities in Mahoney County or Trumbull County, so if you know anybody. And it's not only Youngstown. It's all over Mahoney County and all over Trumbull County, so it's not just in the city. Generally correct. In case you ever see anything or you think somebody needs help, 211's easy to remember.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, resolutions, motion?
Motion approved resolutions, A through J.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner Medio Agetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes.
All righty. Quick and easy. Call for the good of the order. Linda, whoop, Linda had her hand first, sorry.
Sorry about... Just to hit the highlights, it'll be in the grandstand at the fair. Friday, tomorrow is the demolition derby in the grandstand, Saturday's the truck and tractor pool, Sunday is the big concert with John Mellencamp.
I'll be there.
All right, good. And Monday is Chris Young with Ray Lynn. As you're walking around the fair, you may see some signs about their capital campaign for the Junior Fair building. If anybody could drop a couple of bucks in their collection container right near the rock, it will help these young people, the Junior Fair, build a fantastic new facility which is very much needed. So every dollar counts, if you can help.
And it's good for the economy, too, right?
Uh, yeah, we're excited about what they're proposing. We're excited about it. Once the fair winds down, the activities and events don't stop. Next weekend, for example, is Yishu Home Opener against Robert Morris at the Ice Castle. Next Sunday's the Green Cathedral, half marathon, five K through Mill Creek Park. Also, next Sunday, Mahoney Valley Historical Society is commemorating their Founder's Day with a really cool thing. It's a walking tour, historic walking tour of downtown Youngstown. Those will take off at noon and 4:00 PM, starting from the Tyler History Center in downtown Youngstown. And also, next weekend is Antiques in the Woods at the Shaker Woods Ground. As always, go to youngstownlive.com, hit up our website, click the Events tab, and there's a full array of fall events, because always...
Always something happening.
Right around the corner, always something. Yishu, Yishu football.
Yep, all the high school football started, Yishu, Ohio State's first games tonight, Yep, all the high school football started, Yashue, Ohio State's first games tonight, Buckeyes play tonight, and so, it's all good. Anyone, anyone else? Yeah, Lou.
Just want to throw out on September 9th, which will be a paper shredding event sponsored by Shepherd Valley and West Boulevard from 9:00 to 12:00. On September 23rd, there's going to be electronics drive here, sponsored by Campfield Township, back to the government building at Campfield Fairgrounds. Also, on the same day, there's going to be electronics drive, the Ocean Township on Seacrest and Tire Drive at the same location, Ocean Township. And then last week, we're doing a pilot this year, Campfield Fairgrounds. We've got 65 gallon carts, 40 of them, around there to try to assist with the recycling program. We're servicing them with our satellite trucks, and if it's successful, we'll have to double it for next year. We're doing a fair.
Nice, good job. Excellent.
I just wanted to recognize these young men and ladies who took time out of their fair time to come over to the meeting. These are members of our 4-H Royal Court this year. We have our crowning later today at 2:00 over on the concourse stage. So, I just wanted to introduce some of them. We have six young men, six young ladies on the court. Some of them had school this morning. So, we have Matthew Petty sitting up here. Josh is actually, sitting here, is actually a member of our outstanding youth that will also be crowned today. We have Kristen Swetlak and Olivia Rep, Zach Kemmer, Kawiya Barwick, Janell Benson, and Carson Markley. Oh, Tyler Moff, I didn't see Tyler sitting there. They have Cole Chumby and William Reps back here. So, a great group of young people, and we're excited about the crowning this afternoon. Also, want to recognize Cher and O'Rock up in the corner, all 50 years into 4-H environment.
You started advising when you were 8. You look great in your 40s.
Just very quickly, there's some healthy snacks back here we want to promote, healthy eating, before you make your way over to the fair.
I saw Robin.
I assure you, there is no ramen nor are there hot dogs.
Robin, I, for six months, I've been on fruits, vegetables, and meats. No carbs, no sugars. I lost 40 pounds. And so, this is going to be the biggest test for me. Those Cinnabons and that Dorusso sausage is cold.
Well, there's actually some pumpkin muffins back here, but there's no added fat, salt, or sugar. So, give them a try, and obviously, you know, that's...
The real entertainment is not at the grandstand, it's the county auditors booth in the government building. Eric's going to be there today, Diane Frye will be there later today, the Lord leave from the dog shelter. We have Bob Remedio, my chief appraiser, coming in several days this week. We have the reassessment of all the properties in the county coming up. So, Bob will be there, and representatives of integrity appraisal. We have 165,000 parcels being revalued. We don't assess taxes, we give the value of your properties. We have people who talk about veterans exemptions, homestead exemptions. We have dog tag display. If you come and talk with township you're from, we have township maps from 1860 we're giving away. And since we're in charge of weights and measures, magnets give you conversion for cooking for your refrigerator, as long as it's not stainless. So, cup the auditor's booth, that's where it's all happening again.
Ralph and Carol were the only two that were here who made those maps originally in 1860. I can run faster than Carol now. It's the only time I'm available, girl, you can run faster than her.
But Dave, if she catches you...
I don't know. She will, eventually.
She's got a good eye, 50 yards.
All right, talking about fall events, St. Dupreeh, one of our farmers is here. Fall is a big time for our farm economy, for everyone to support our local pumpkin farms, apple orchards, agritourism operations, molnars. We have more farmers markets than almost any county in the state. Make sure you take some time, go visit them, support them, do a couple activities, actually take a squash and bake it. That's healthier than most everything else we eat. And we don't eat those enough. Every other country, you know, uses pumpkins all winter long. So, you just don't carve it, write it on with magic marker, and then save it, and you can make a pie out of what you get at Sam's Farm. So, support our local farms. That money goes back into our local economy instead of going to the big supermarkets.
Beautiful, thank you, Eric. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much, we really, whoa, whoa. I didn't, I didn't forget about my colleagues. Carol?
That's because he just can't give it up.
She's poking me, saying, "Speed it up, speed it up."
To get over there.
I think she wants, she wants a Cinnabon now.
I might have a Cinnabon.
Carol?
Well, I just want to thank Campfield again for hosting us over here at the OSU. It's always a pleasure to come here and see what you do and have meetings here. You do great things, and hopefully, we'll have one of those gardens in the city one of these days.
An orchard.
An orchard in the city. I'm looking forward to that. And all the good work that our county employees and all of the administrative people that were just with our bonding in New York, we did a fabulous job. You know, we're well on the way to a new air in Mahoney County. And I say this at every meeting, we have a group of elected officials, we have a group of people that work for these elected officials, as well as appointed people and directors of their positions, that actually could sit at the table and work together and try to get things solved. And we have done that, and it shows in what we do when we go to New York. So, it's not just us, it's all of our team, and that's the whole county. So, I want to thank you for that. My two colleagues here that have kept me upbeat for the last three months, I want to kill them, but they have. They're always my good, I should say, my good laugh when you need it, you know? So, thank you, thank my gang. And thank you all. Please have fun at the fair. Eat a lot, go to the buildings, have fun, because I love the fair.
Yeah, certainly echo what Carol Medio said. Have fun at the fair, I enjoy this time of year. I do want to thank Eric and his wonderful staff for what they do out here in our community. They're a very integral part of Mahoney County, not only to our society, but basically to our agriculture. You couldn't find better folks than what they do here, all the farmers and the extension, and of course, Junior Fair. It's a program that we love, and I'd like to congratulate the court. Could you raise your hands again, to the young people? Congratulations. Eat a lot like I will this weekend, I'll start on Tuesday. I'm going to go off my thing, I'm going to go back on it.
No, no, you got to hang, you got to take it back. You're doing good.
There's a fruit stand right there.
That's right in front of the government building, you know? You should have had a day of fasting for the whole county on Tuesday.
I tried.
You should have made a resolution.
I tried.
Oh, no, we're going to have a wellness program, they're going to be running around the courthouse. So, you'll see a lot of people...
That's right.
Right here, a lot of people in tennis shoes, bring good shoes to work.
Well, I, I, I too would, Ralph, we do, would like to thank everyone here. You know, it's, a lot of us get the recognition for things that happen when the people behind the scenes do all the work, you know? And it's, whether it's the youth or all of our department heads, and, you know, the people that work in each department, you know, Ralph's department's done a great job. Page and Eddie, I can't thank you enough, you see all the roads being paved out there. A lot of good things are happening, like Carol said, in Mahoney County. A lot of people are working together, doing good things on behalf of the residents, and it starts out with all the youth that are here today, you know, and making sure that they pick it ups for us old people to be able to, you know, fade away. You know, we need all of you young guys and girls out there doing things that, you know, help us for the future. So, thank you.
I just want to make an announcement.
Sure.
I just want to let everybody know that the commissioners, who, lack of a better word, sponsor the Senior Levy. It is in full swing, and the Senior Levy Area Agency on Aging will be at the commissioners' and the government building, and also in the health building. And they are registering anybody that's 60 years or older for the farmer's market $50 voucher. And it's free, there's no income qualification. So, if you're 60 or above, stop at the Area Agency on Aging for the Senior Levy voucher for the farmer's market.
I'm sorry to say that in December, I've become one of those 60-year-old girls.
Yeah, you can use that white house.
Well, thank you all so much for coming and all of your great addition to our community and what you do on behalf of all of us. So, thank you so much. So, motion to adjourn.